So there's.
You are being recorded.
So it's seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and there's not really a huge agenda here. So I'll, I'll moderate and I'll take notes. So. Um, is there any correspondence, anything relevant to the issues that we have here? Amy's here, so I don't have to talk about the email that I got from her and she'll have some information about the insurance, I hope. And um, so I think just before we start, the financial review that I put down there is just to remind us that as of the last meeting, we had seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars available to us. Any questions on that?
Nope.
So let's hear from John, what he found out about the trailer and I know people have lots of questions.
All right, I'm gonna see if I can share the host participant is sharing, okay.
You want to share a screen, John?
Yeah, I was gonna share a screen. I have some, at least the, the printed out specs on the trailers.
Okay, you should be able to do that now.
Oh. Oh, can you guys see that?
Yep.
Yep.
So the one that's highlighted is the one that I um, asked them to um, spec out for us.
It just disappeared.
Uh, did it really?
Go back to your prior tab, John. It looks like you've got a couple of tabs open.
Hold on, let me try it again. Share screen, trailer. Share. Is that better?
Looks good.
All right. So the one that's in the middle is the um, the one that I had them uh, spec out a sixteen foot um, trailer. The difference is on there is the interior height is going to be different because the uh, UTV, RTV that we have is six foot three. So it's going to be a seven foot interior. So it'll be a six-six doorway for it to fit through. Um, other than that, she said that the specs on that aren't really gonna change as far as the weight is gonna be a little bit different, not by a lot. Um, but that's because that's just because we added the height on that. Um, the two things that I denoted on there is the um, interior length is sixteen feet with two feet in the front for the V nose. And then the nine foot is what I have listed as far as the measurements on our RTV. Um, the eighty inches is the interior width and fifty-five inches is what I got for the width of the um, RTV. Um, looking through one of the other um, things that we had talked about possibly in the future that I was looking into, the add to that was the um, the uh, a molar of some sort. Um, the toe behind the UTV. Um, and with those specs, I found it depends on which one we got, but all of the ones that are the trailer ones that they offer would fit in there. Um, my concern with the trailer one is just uh, people said backing it up and turning is difficult. So my concern would be getting it in and I'm not sure how that would be to back it up. It is offset, but you can straighten it out. I just don't know as far as the ramp um, to the uh, to get it into the trailer. Um, what else? I guess like the best thing to do is ask, what is, what do we have for questions? I don't have the price on there. Didn't the price get sent to everybody?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, I was, I got a note with the price on it. I had two quick questions. One was that the uh, I read something about ventilation and I wondered if that was going to be any kind of a factor about weatherproofing. Uh, I couldn't, uh, couldn't figure out what that was referring to. Uh, the other, go ahead.
So the venting is two different ways. There's a front vent. We, I, I asked them to add vents because it's gonna be sitting outside. So um, there'll be a vent in the side, in the front, I believe it's lower, and then in the back lower on the opposite side. So air can kind of vent through it to um, just keep air moving in and out of it. Um, it does work better obviously when you're driving because the air will come in the intake and go out the X. Um, but that's what that venting was. Um, it's, I don't believe it's a roof, it's not a roof vent. The top is solid, I believe. They don't list anything on there. The vents definitely that I asked about are lower on the side in the front and back.
And it's not the kind of thing that would allow rain, wind driven rain to get in and get everything wet?
I, I, I don't believe so. I mean, this is what they use on all their trailers to vent them.
See, I could understand that especially if it was a horse trailer, livestock. That was my, my concern about that. The other thing is, did I recall that this is basically a, a one-off custom built thing? That if we order it and then find out that the unit doesn't fit in there, were, were the owners of something we can't use or what?
Well, yeah, if we order it, it's a special order with ours. I mean, we, they're not gonna take it back uh, if it's not big enough. But that's why we've done measurements on the UTV and on the uh, the trailer to make sure that it would fit.
It looks like your measurements are, are well within the uh, specs on the trailer itself. Um, you know, eighty inches and fifty-five and, and the other.
Yep, the weight, the weight too, because it takes a payload of uh, forty-six hundred pounds and I believe the uh, RTV, I don't have the numbers off it. They're like thirteen hundred and fifty-six pounds or something. I have the specs, I can get the exact number if you need it, but it wasn't even close to that. And with, again, looking at the mower, the, the weights that I saw on the mowers are about four hundred pounds. So that would not put us over. And then again, tools and stuff like that are, we still have plenty of weight as far as that.
John, what type of mower are you thinking about?
So I, I got a mower from um, from Paul before he just had something that he just picked up. So I was just doing some uh, I didn't uh, scan any documents, but it's the um, DR field and brush mowers. They make two, well, they make many different sizes. Um, but they make a push mower and or a mower that can um, hook to the back of an RTV or even a, a four by uh, quad. And that you can pull it. It actually sets so you can offset it. Um, I forgot the degrees that it offsets so that you can kind of ride down the middle of the trail with the RTV and it would mow uh, into the side.
How do you feel, how do you feel it would be placed in the trailer?
Well, that was, I was saying that was be my concern because I don't know as far as the ramp heights to get that, a mower into the trailer and how that would be, because the things that I've read on the mowers, it's difficult backing them up is what it said.
No, is it long enough inside to, to take the RTV, ATV and a mower?
Yes.
With the mower on?
So the mower would have to be um, put in and then you would have to um, there's like an extension arm that goes on the mower. You would have to um, fold that up, which it's, would uh, it's like pins that come out and then you fold it up because that's actually like, I believe it's six feet in length. Um, I don't have the exact, but when you fold that up, it fits, it would definitely fit in there. I'm looking for, I got a bunch of specs on these. So the one that's fifty-two inches cutting, it says that it's thirteen feet long, but that thirteen feet would break six feet off that thirteen feet. So it would be seven feet. So if you're looking, um, that one would have to go into the nose of the, the front of that, but it would be uh, that one would be kind of tight. But the next size down um, is less than that one. It is only twelve feet. So now it would be six feet. So you're talking nine and six feet. So you'd be at like fifteen feet, but you have that two feet for the nose uh, still in there.
But isn't the, isn't the nose already allocated for tools?
Well, the tools would be up higher. The mower is only, uh, I don't have the heights on the mower, but the mower only sits, I mean, like the motor on top, it's probably only two feet tall. It's not something that's uh, the tools I would, I, I imagine the tools as being hung up in the nose of that uh, trailer, up on some types of hooks or holders so that they wouldn't be tossed around.
Now, now is this trailer aluminum or steel?
It is aluminum with a.
It's just a skin.
Yep, it's just a skin on it. Inside is plywood and then on the, what does it say it on here? Models that are sixteen feet and over a six inch tube steel mainframe. So the frame underneath it is tube steel. Uh, the lights on it, what, yep.
Go ahead.
Well, it said the lights, the lights on it are all um, LED lights. Um, three-quarter inch plywood, sixteen inches on center, inside the side walls. Um, there was a quote that she, on her quote that she gave us, if we want to be thicker skin on it, on the outside, that was um, like three hundred dollars more.
Well, we should probably get that, that the trailer is gonna be on the outs, in the outside for its life, I assume.
Yes, we don't have a place, definitely. That's why we're getting it, we, we would like to get a trailer is to put our equipment and the UTV, RTV uh, inside of it to keep that out of the weather and to be able to transport it, obviously.
Shouldn't we also consider an aluminum frame?
Um, I don't know what the benefits would be. I don't know what the cost would be.
Benefits of that would be longevity and is less prone to rusting and rotting over time.
Yep. Uh, I would have to ask them if they do that as part of their package. I didn't see it in any of the specs. So that would be something I would have to ask them about if they do offer a um, both of their smaller trailers and a bigger our tube steel mainframe.
What was the model and manufacturer of that mower?
Mower is a.
DR premium?
DR field and brush mowers. And if you go to their website, they have they really go from like ten horsepower and every horsepower in between up to like twenty horsepower. Uh, they have the push ones, they have the trailer ones. So they have a lot of options actually on there. I actually think they're kind of expensive. But as far as a push mower or a pull mower, that's the best ones that they make.
Yeah. Two, two thousand bucks for a forty-four inch field and brush mowers, what I found on a quick search.
Yeah.
How much?
Uh, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. I said two thousand.
Yeah. But I'm just gonna say if you look at those mowers on there, horsepower matters. Um, because we don't have a PTO drive, so obviously it, it's, these cutters are not made to cut like grass to make it look like a golf course. They're made to cut um, brush. Uh, and the reviews that I read on the, on the cutters, horsepower matters as far as um, it being able to cut and to cut well.
Uh, so John, this is Paul. I got a couple of questions on the trailer. If you want to go back to the trailer.
Sure.
So on the trailer, um, you uh, could you go over, what's the height of the door again?
The height of the door is going to be um, six-six and the interior height for the, the trailer itself will be seven feet.
Okay, cuz it's uh, the, cuz it's six-three for the Kubota, right? So, okay.
The Kubota itself is actually six feet, but with that new, that roof that we had added on, that adds three inches, yeah.
Now, the, the back door, that falls down into a ramp?
It does.
And do you know what the uh, the weight rating for that is?
I had it. I believe it was a one-ton weight. But it was definitely under the uh, under, over the specs. They don't have it on here. I would have to get those specifics.
I, I was just a little concerned, concerned about bringing the Kubota up there, because it's the, I thought, so that's gonna be kind of pushing, what was the weight of the Kubota again? Do you, do you recall?
I, um, give me one second. I can look it up. I have it rated here.
So the concern is just that it's gonna be strong enough to, you know, run that up and down into the trailer.
Yep. It's thirteen hundred and something pounds, I.
Okay.
It's not uh, close to even a ton. It's like six, seven hundred uh, pounds under that. Um, I also told them when I was specing this out, when I told them about the trailer, what we intended to use it for. To drive the UTV up there and that's what some people do with, do, do with them. So it's not, it's not like we're doing something different than other people have done in the past.
Okay, and this has a side door?
It does have a side door, yes.
Okay, um, I, in, in general, where, where are we planning on storing this? Right now, the shed we're using is at the town garage and their parking area there is pretty filled up with buses and stuff. Are, are they gonna allow us to stick this here? Is that, is that the plan or, uh, does anybody know?
Well, that was the plan before, before. I mean, they, when when we stored it in that trailer, that trailer was supposed to be temporary for us and they were gonna look for a, a better trailer and that just happened to be what they had. Now, I don't know what Rich is saying these days. I'd have to check again.
Yeah, cuz uh, when John and I went down there, basically half that trailer is filled up with the town garage stuff. So I don't know if they're planning on, they, they may be planning on keeping that for themselves, so we may have to squeeze something in there.
Oh, I know we have to ask them, but I mean, there's plenty of area around that to, to park a trailer, I would think. I mean, I, I, I can't say that they've given us permission, but I'm, it's, it's not like it's tight around there. Definitely, we would have to check with the foreman.
And, and how, what is it gonna take to pull this trailer?
So um, I looked at the weight capacities. If you look at the um, the curb weight on this, it's twenty-four hundred pounds. And then if you put the Kubota and all that, again, I just look at my Toyota, I have a Toyota, my Toyota can pull six thousand pounds.
Okay.
So I mean, it doesn't take, you don't have to have a super duty truck. I, I'm not gonna lie, if we were towing this to New Hampshire and back for something, I wouldn't want to tow it with my truck. Um, to tow it to our trails and maybe to get maintenance on something or, you know, or something like around town. Um, I wouldn't have a problem towing it with my Toyota. Again, further than around town, I would prefer to have an F-150 or Ram fifteen-hundred, whatever you want to say.
Hey, hey, John?
Yes.
On that, on that subject, I was waiting to cut in, sorry Paul, but since that came up um, and knowing that I said I could probably tow it with my truck, my truck, my Colorado will do seventy-seven hundred pounds. Uh, and I've done the trailer with the horses in it. But Mike, is your trailer, well, is your truck equipped like mine with the brake system? I see this does have an electric brake, so you have to have the brake system in the truck.
Yep.
Okay, so we both have those options, cuz you can't just hook it up to a, a truck that isn't set up for the electric brake.
Nope, all it is is the brake controller and the um, the different plug-in.
Right, exactly. And I know you can get different adapters if your plug is different. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have the only truck uh, available, cuz uh, obviously you and I uh, you know, together might be able to do it, but one or the other could be a problem. And, and going back one, I just, I didn't know if I heard correctly and I apologize cuz the numbers were flying by. You said the Kubota was sixty-three inches or six-three tall?
Um, it's actually six foot three inches. The, the uh, Kubota itself is six feet, is six feet, but we put that plastic roof on when it was ordered. That adds three inches, so.
If it's six foot three inches tall, you're at seventy-five inches and your rear door height is sixty-nine.
No, that's why I'm saying it's special order. The, the, they're gonna make, the door height is, is gonna be a six-six door height.
Okay.
So that gives you three inches clearance.
I'm looking at the stats in front of me and it said sixty-nine inches, so I wanted to make sure that if you said six-three, that we accounted for that. That extra height, okay.
And then the height inside the trailer will actually be seven foot, not what's listed on there, because that's what it, has to be whatever that equals out above six foot three to be uh, stable or whatever. That's how they build them. So it'll be, should be definitely plenty of headroom.
Good, okay. Didn't want to make that mistake and find out after that we made a simple math error, but you got it covered.
Yeah, that was my only concern right from the beginning. Um, i- if it's six foot six inch doorway and the unit is six foot three, logically it will fit. But it's going up at an angle.
Yep.
And then it's only getting through the doorway that's the problem. Once we're through the doorway, it's golden. So um, I don't know without actually driving it in and since it's a special order for us, uh, that's my only concern. If it fits, I, and then we're way ahead of the game because it's just been sitting in that trailer all this time over there and uh, except for when you took it out and did that job.
Yeah, so Charlie, I, I actually went down and talked to them because um, Paul and I went down and we measured it. Because if you look at the Kubota's standards, it says that it's six feet tall. And I'm glad we went and measured it because it's actually six foot three when you measure it. Um, and I went and talked to them, like I said, I told them what we wanted to do with the Kubota, to put it in a trailer and what the height was. And they gave me the height that it would need to be, because they did talk about the angle of pulling it in um, to make sure that it, it would get through the door.
Okay, um, I, I think we're at a point where we should make a motion to, to order this thing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is that a, a single axle or a dual uh?
Dual, I said.
Dual axle.
Dual axle, okay.
Yes.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Are, are we owning this or is the town owning this?
Well, I would think it would belong to the Trails Committee. We're using our money.
Okay, so are we gonna register it and pay the insurance and that sort of stuff on it and get it, you know, all set to go on the road?
Well, Amy.
Okay.
Um, Marie did some research for us today with the insurance company. Can you give us her update, Amy?
Okay, um, I think Marie had sent you over some responses. We conferred with our attorney. We conferred with our insurance agent. There wasn't a lot of positive response from our insurance agent in regard to it. If you were to move forward with this, there needs to be some strict guidelines as far as who's, who's hooking up and towing. Um, my other question would be, I know that the Trails has some machinery, et cetera. Who's qualified to be operating some of the machinery? I don't know if you have chainsaws, things like that. Um, what qualifications, what safety standards are you going through? Obviously, we're talking about a decent amount of liability. Just can't be anybody hooking up to the trailer because some of the things that you need to think about is what if you're in an accident while you're towing the town's trailer? Um, I think there's going to be some vetting that's need to, that's going to need to occur, which means some um, driving history, you know, some uh, motor vehicle records. We're gonna have to go through that. Um, not just anybody is going to be able to just hook up and tow the trailer and, and we're gonna need some notification about when and who is hooking up. Um, if you, if a volunteer wants to do something like this, it's, it's all well and good. I do, I do, my husband and I do a lot of volunteering. Um, we don't rely on somebody else to cover the cost. Obviously, this is a town committee. So it, it's, it's just, it's a touchy, it's a sketchy subject because we are talking about liability for the town and for yourselves personally. Um, so sorry, I don't, I don't have a, a solid firm answer. I don't have numbers for you because we don't have specs on what the trailer is. So we don't, we don't have numbers as far as what it's going to cost to insure because we didn't have these specs to provide for the insurance company. Um, but my thought going in is that there's going to me, need to be like a designated tower who's going to have to go through a motor vehicle record check. Um, one, maybe one or two towers. Um, and then there's gonna need to be some type of guidelines as far as, oh, well, when are you taking it out? And almost like a sign out sheet. Oh, we're taking it out, we're doing this, this weekend or um, just so that there's some control in place. Um, so rather than saying, no, absolutely, it's too much of a liability, let's just put some, some, some guidelines in place that can be followed. Um, that, you know, will bring a little bit of control to the, the use of the trailer. But yes, I mean, it could, it could technically be registered to the town and insured by the town.
Oh, okay.
Amy, if, if it's registered and insured by the town, is that a budget item that would come out of Trails annually? Or is that something that would be, come under DPW's vehicle?
No, it would absolutely have to. If this is something Trails wants to undertake, we're gonna have to make sure that Trails can cover it. Yeah, I'm not putting it on another department. I won't put it on rec, I won't put it on DPW.
I just wanted to make that.
My opinion anyways.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make that clear, just so when we know in making decisions, kind of, we don't, we don't really have a revolving annual budget or we haven't, you know, or we have revenue coming in and, and stuff going out, where this would really put it on Trails where we, we need to raise or, or make a certain amount of money each year in order to cover the costs of, of that.
Right. I do, I mean, I don't see covering the insurance on a trailer will be extremely high. That, I mean, that's the one positive note. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's going to be pretty minute, is, is my feeling. So.
So the registration class or?
For the registrate, and no, the registration will be just, yeah.
Okay.
But the insurance shouldn't be astronomical.
Yeah, just some, just something for us to keep in mind. Um, you know, just because we haven't had a, an annual expense like that from the Trails budget. So, um, you know, we, we've been, you know, based on the, the, um, you know, total amount in the, the account right now, you know, clearly we've been saving and saving for, for this purchase. Um, but just knowing, um, you know, how, going forward, how we're allocating our, our resources and our funds and.
And, and Trails is sure this is something that you absolutely need? I mean, what, how often throughout the year are you planning on utilizing this?
So right now, Amy, the problem is, is we own the UTV that we got on a grant and we can't drive it anywhere or use it to do trail work with.
Okay.
Um, there's no way to transport it. Uh, I mean, unless we rent the trailer and we've had kind of, we've gone back and forth. We've had this UTV for almost three years now and it's only been out once.
Okay.
Um, so like we have all this equipment and there's no way to necessarily get it to the trails. I mean, you can put it in your own vehicle and take it and that's fine. A- as far as our equipment, we don't have anything more expensive than um, what a homeowner would own. We do have some chainsaws. We have two of those. Um, you know, we have weed whackers, we have shovels, we have rakes, uh, wheelbarrows, um, all that sort of stuff. I mean, nothing uh, out of the ordinary. But again, with the UTV that we got on a grant, um, there's no way to get it anywhere.
Right.
Uh, you can't, you, even if you register it, I looked into registering it cuz we, we have them at the fire departments. And even registering it, it doesn't allow you to drive it on the roads.
Right.
Um, we can with our, ours, if it's an emergency situation, there's a forest fire, but obviously Trails, there's not emergency trail repairs or whatever you want to say. So we wouldn't really, you know, that's not something that they really want us doing. Um, the other thing that I will say about it is top speed on the UTV is only like twenty-five miles an hour. That's downhill.
Yeah.
Not designed to go fast. So again, just moving it, if you do go on the roads, isn't, you know, the, the, the best option either.
No, absolutely not. I agree with that completely.
Uh, and one of our issues is it's been able to, you know, to get tools and to the trail and to be able to do the work that we need to do when it's needed.
And John, John, do you think that um, having designated, a couple designated drivers, that would be?
I don't think that's gonna be bad, cuz I'm gonna be honest with you. You can probably poll the Trails Committee and I, other than probably Brian and I, I maybe, I don't think Charlie has a vehicle to tow it with. I, I don't know who else would want to right now. I mean, it's gonna change. There'll be new members hopefully at some point. But um, I, I don't disagree with just, you know, letting everybody drive. No, not, not everybody's gonna want to, but having designated people isn't a bad idea.
Right. And going to proper, the proper vetting, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, and again, whatever you think is right with that, like I said, I, I, for me, I, I have the operator's license for the fire equipment. I would think that more, you know, and whatever insurance checks or whatever registration, not, not back history, driving history checks. If that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
And, and can you send me the specs on this trailer so that we can get you a firm quote?
Um, I can. Do you, the sheet that's being shared? Um, I can. Do you use the sheet that's being shared right now or?
Yeah, the sheet that's being shared or what what you're planning on purchasing.
Okay. I mean, I can send that definitely to you.
Is there some reason why we can't use the town flatbed? Then it transports his mowers to the different parks?
What, using?
I'm just gonna, that he said that we use the town's flatbed to uh that they use to pull the mowers around. I I I'm just gonna say this, a- and I'm not saying anything meaning in a bad way because everybody has their work to do. We've asked for the Trails to be mowed a- and consistently, we haven't been able to get that done. And I it has to be done by the town employees and it's, i- it's not something for them. So that's why we're trying to uh, you know, purchase a trailer to get our equipment around to be able to do what we need for work so that we don't have to rely on other people. I mean, it's nice to have help from other people, but it it as far as trying to get things done like that, i- it's been difficult.
John, did did um Rich and his crew get out there at some point? I thought they got out there by later in the fall and I thought they did like two swipes.
So I I don't know when they were out there over the summer. They did um part of the trail. They didn't do it all. But I did it with a volunteer and their tractor and their mower and we mowed. Uh, we didn't quite get all of it done this year.
Right.
And that was with somebody who just, he has a tractor. Again, he used to be a town employee and he has a tractor and a big mower and he helped us out by doing that.
We we did go, and I will, in the defense of the Public Works Department, they did go through a really tough time this year. They didn't have summer help. They were short staffed for a good portion. And then with COVID, that threw things off because they were on a two week on, two week off schedule. So it really was a mess this year. But I I know they're trying to, with the little staff that they have, do a lot, so.
Yep. And mine was by no means a complaint about it. I know they have their stuff to do.
And we appreciate, we appreciate all the volunteer work that that the Trails Committee and other committees do. So um, thank you so much for the time that you did put in. It is.
Uh, this is Karen. I just wanna say for Mike's and just what for what Mike asked to use the town equipment, that means it has to be done during the week and most of our volunteers are working.
Right. I I can see value. I can see value in the Trails having the trailer to number one, store their equipment, so it's out of the um shipping container. Um, I believe that's where it's being stored right now. And and that would be great for you guys to have everything all encompassing in one trailer. Um, when you, when there's volunteers available and you can hook up and take it to a site, then I can totally understand that.
This topic brings up a couple of key points that I think we're gonna have to come back to. Uh, the first one, somebody made a statement that said, well, Trails Committee buys it. It's ours. It's a Trails Committee. I think what it actually winds up being is that if the Trails Committee buys it and makes a grant of the trailer to the town then register it and insure it. But we're gonna have to come up with money on that anyway. The other key point is, yeah, some of us can run a chainsaw and some of us can run a drive the ATV. But it would be smart and protect the town if we were to actually have some sort of a class with a person who really knows how to do it to uh look over our shoulders and say, yep, Charlie, you can run the chainsaw and you won't cut your foot off. And so, okay, so now I got a certificate on record somewhere. Uh, that's something I think we're gonna have to come back to. But uh definitely, the airline trailers is the eight hundred pound gorilla, but there's a half a dozen other trailers that we'd like to be able to get this equipment out to. And as John said, you know, we've got this, it's an asset, but if it's just sitting there, we can't use it, then it's a liability. So I think that the time has come for us to uh as long as we know it's gonna fit through the back door, I have no problems. That's a reasonable enough price, even with that extra heavy skin.
Before we vote?
Yeah.
So. Uh, is that something that generally people think the extra heavy skin is something that that's worthwhile?
Yeah, and David would really like to know if if we got aluminum, how much would that cost us additional for the for the?
Aluminum frame.
Frame, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna be seventy years old this year. I don't know if I'm gonna live long enough to see either of them rust, but.
Well, but I hope the Trails Committee carries on when we're beyond.
Okay, be an optimist. I like that.
So um also, one of my thoughts on here is um I had discussed with them with color and the only color that we came up with was the standard color. They had white or silver. Um, and and just a thought that I had on there, I don't know what the cost, I would have to ask him. It was afterthought. Um, is an orange color like the shirts that we have? And maybe at some point we could have the uh Trails Committee emblem, you know, the the Airbrush Shack paint something on the side or I don't know what, but I'm just saying. Um, talking before with Paul, Paul suggested that we put that on the um RTV that says Thompson Trails Committee. So people seeing it on the trail won't think that somebody's just riding on the trail, that it's actually the Thompson Trails Committee doing work and not joyriding with a RTV on the trail. And I don't think that's a bad idea on either parts. Um, again, could be something that Community Day, that we bring it to Community Day and we open the back and show what we have for equipment to use on the trails. Maybe we get some more interested people to volunteer. Just some thoughts I had uh on that.
I think we were gonna get a quote. I think you were gonna get a quote from the Airbrush Sha- Shack for it, like a large decal. I mean, we wouldn't want to do just one because of the printing. We'd get several. And so that could be on the vehicle and the trailer.
I remember that too. Okay. Um.
They know what our D our our logo looks like and we just do the black and white version, probably.
Yeah, and I I would like to also say Thompson Trails is, you know, in addition to the logo, so uh, everybody knows what it is. They may not recognize the logo right o- right away.
It's part of it.
So, and I know we had discussed that before. My, I I wanted, I guess I can ask him what he thinks as far as the size because not having the vehicle there, I don't know exactly what size would fit on the um, the only place it can go on the front and on the tailgate.
Now, this is Amy St. Ange again. Now, I I know you have a Thompson Trails, but everybody does is aware of the new logo for the town? Just saying it might be nice to incorporate that. If you did a white trailer with that pop of the logo with the with the trails and the bicyclist and it's just a thought.
It's a really good thought.
Want to keep promoting that logo. It's really beautiful.
And in regards to um, you know, having volunteers out and working with uh you know, equipment and machinery and what I I'm sure, I don't know if Lian's still on the call, but I I'm wondering like how the Last Green Valley handles, you know, workdays and if they have a kind of a sample, you know, volunteer. I know we do in the town have a volunteer application and man, I think it's pretty simple, you know, kind of sign off that might satisfy our attorneys and liability and type of people, you know, if they're participating in a workday and and that sort of thing as volunteers, so.
Yeah, I think I think the biggest thing is anytime you're like dealing with chainsaws, things like that, it's really important to have things like the chaps, the eye protection.
We have that.
We do have that.
Good, good.
We have two full sets of chaps, helmets, ear protection, goggles, gloves.
That's good to know. That makes me happy.
This is Lian from the Last Green Valley. Um, we have with our cleanup uh funds, we've awarded money for chaps and, you know, clippers and rakes and that kind of thing. Um, the sign in sheet, everyone needs to sign in, but we're changing our requirements on that because the National Park Service is getting more stringent. So I'm not sure exactly on what we're gonna need. Um, I know it's the name and the location of where you're working and the time in and time out, but I don't know of any more than that.
Yeah.
I also somewhere have the what the US Army Corps uses for their volunteer sheet. You know, we can, we can base it on that also.
Yeah, just thinking ahead about, you know, all these volunteers that when when we have our nice new trailer with the big sign and attract all these new people who maybe don't know how to
We have a lot of hand tools.
So that we're, yeah, or just in general, so that we're prepared to kind of, you know, uh formally, uh, you know, bring them on as and uh get them any training on equipment that they might want to use, so yeah.
And and I'm not gonna lie, if I had, if I had volunteers, but if I had vol- right, I would let my volunteers use a hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, the very least, we're gonna need a storage container.
That's what we're talking about here, Mike.
And then so, you know, even if you don't have a means of transporting it, you you must have a place to store all this.
I don't know the the number of acres on that Buckley Hill property, but I do know that even uh with the proviso, the tune will be building a new salt shed. We've got room that this thing can fit. A lot of spots over there.
Or even at the top.
How secure it is, how secure it is, is is second question. But I do know, we tried to rent trailers from U-Haul and the ones that have the double axles were nowhere to be found when we wanted them. That we we would have had to have it shipped in specially just to use. And uh the guys up on uh one thirty-one were not too enthusiastic about that. Uh, so we didn't do it. Again, it becomes a liability instead of an asset.
This is Lian again from the Last Green Valley. You can purchase some kind of a lock to put on the trailer hitch so that someone driving along with a hitch on their truck can't just take off with your trailer. Um, I I know it's happened in other towns and other people have had trailers stolen. Not to say that it's gonna happen, it's just something to be cautious of.
Wow.
I agree. So do I, but if somebody wants to steal it, they're gonna steal it. It's unfortunate, but it's true. You know, I don't know what to do about that. Except insure it.
Well, that was my first, you know, was who was gonna pay for the insurance and who's gonna pay for the registration and?
Well, the Trails Committee is.
You know, but if it's the town, then that means the town's gonna own it.
Well, reg- regardless, Trails Committee is a branch of the town. So.
That's the way I saw it.
Yeah.
So do we have any other um questions on the um the trailer?
I I think Brian here again, I don't think the question so much on the trailer, but I think before we can make a purchase or vote it, we have to go back to some of the things Amy said and make sure that we can transport it. Now, for example, I know I can pull a trailer, but I can't pack up a trailer. You're probably a lot more talented than I am, John, at that. But um again, the if the insurance or something comes out and says it can't be pulled by a private vehicle if it's being insured by the town, then we're getting a trailer that we still can't. Now we've got a trailer and a utility vehicle that we can't move. So I think we need an answer to that question before we approve purchase.
Yeah, and and the insurance company did say that volunteers could pull it, but they just had to be vetted in some way and there needed to be some type of um procedure that was followed consistently across the board. So this person transports it, um, et cetera.
Well, I asked Marie this morning and I don't know if she was able to get any answers, but so somebody's driving with their vehicle with the town owned or basically Trails owned trailer. And if there is an accident and there is damage to both the vehicle and the trailer or do the individual insurances cover the individual vehicles?
I would think that the the crazy thing is the way I always understood it is because I know my catering company has a trailer and if a friend decides, hey, can I borrow your trailer? The insurance falls on the vehicle that's towing it. So so that's my only concern. Um, that that could become a complicated issue.
Right.
And we and we didn't get a clear cut answer from the insurance. I had asked Marie if she could check with Dan um Anderson, our insurance agent, and just see if that was the case because that's the way I always understood it. And I I didn't get a clear answer from her today, so I do apologize.
So again, I I don't know any of the town stuff, obviously, but again, I insured my camper trailer and that's what I was told is when I'm towing it, it falls under my car insurance or whatever vehicle's towing it. If something happened to it in my yard, then my i- in my yard would be a homeowner's, but if my trailer just broke free and drove down, you know, and hit somebody, then I would need to have it insured because it wouldn't be as part of the tow vehicle.
Right.
So. I just don't know the town part, like I said.
John, if it's parked on the side of the road while you're working on the trail and somebody comes along and hits it, whose insurance?
That should be their insurance.
That would be the.
Well, that should be their insurance.
Oh, the person that hit.
I don't even, the person that hit you.
Say they say it's hit and run, so then who?
Hit and run.
You know, somebody sees a trailer on the side of the road, they hit it and they don't see anybody around. They're not gonna hang around, so supposing that happens, then whose insurance is covers that?
If the trailer was covered under the town insurance, the town insurance would cover it. If it was just sitting there or if it was vandalized, sitting at the public works garage.
Uh huh.
So there's, there's more questions. I'm sorry that we don't have all the answers for you.
Well, I'm I'm going to suggest that we don't vote tonight. Our other meeting is in a couple of weeks. Because we what what we want to do is see if you can, John, if you can find out how much it would cost to have a aluminum frame that would last longer. And and also maybe we want to know about the paint. If you think they would paint it orange for you, but how much would it cost?
Right, and it is an option to paint it that color because I've seen trailers in their yard that are that color. It's just a matter of what the color would want to be.
I mean, it'll be le- less likely someone wants to steal a bright orange trailer.
I don't disagree with both, both emblems on it. I mean, it would be awesome. I mean, it's the town and it's Trails and, you know, so uh, I I think that's something that we can look forward towards in the future, definitely. So John.
John, can you give me the um specs on the trailer so that I can get that over to the insurance agent?
What what specifically do you want?
Oh, just the, just the size of the trailer, just the specs that you have in the sheet right there and.
Yeah, so it's a s- seven by sixteen foot trailer.
Okay.
Um, it says the curb weight on it is twenty-four hundred pounds.
Okay.
It's a dual axle with electric brakes. Um, I don't know what else you need. Overall height would be seven feet.
Can you send me that spec sheet though?
Yes.
Okay, just send that to firstselectmen@thompsoncd.org. And I'll forward that to the insurance agent. I did, I did jot down what you just said, though.
Um, I think if you're going to ask them about an aluminum frame instead of a steel, we want to make sure that it will still hold the same amount of weight.
Yep.
Because if that's restricted, uh restricts the capacity of the trailer significantly, then we may we may be stuck with steel. We don't want to lose that. Uh, I understand aluminum should last longer, be less corrosive, less uh oxidation, but.
John, I thought I saw at the top of this sheet that it was aluminum. Can you scroll up a bit?
No, the frame is not. The whole body is aluminum.
Oh, okay, that is so, okay, I was just reading.
If you look up here, it's, I don't know if you can see my cursors on here. Uh, aluminum right here.
Yeah.
Or you can upgrade it to um point three zero, but if you look over here, models sixteen and over are six inch tube steel frame.
Yeah.
No, I think they engineered that. They figured that that needs to be that extra weight frame in order to to uh support this.
The weight.
Yeah.
Again, tube aluminum is pretty strong too. I mean, they make uh camping trailers out of them and they're they have plenty of weight to them with, you know, the stuff you put inside them, but I will ask them.
Uh, so, John, I have another question that you can ask them, or maybe, you know, is there an option to have some kind of stabilizer feet in the rear? So, if the, there's, you don't have a vehicle hooked to the tongue, and if you're driving, you know, something out the back, that it doesn't lift the tongue up, the...
Yep. So, I'll ask them, there is one in the front, I know that, so that when it's not on a vehicle, it sits level. Uh, but I'll ask about those, I know they can put them on, only because you can put them on anything, really. It's just an added cost option.
Okay.
So, there, any other questions for John to ask?
Uh, so, what, does it come with a spare tire, John?
It does not.
One other thing that I wanted to talk about tonight a little bit is, um, I asked Tara if she could see if there were any grant or fundraising possibilities for this, additional to what we've got on, in our treasury?
Uh, I haven't found anything specific that's open right now. I get a Grant Finder email, um, weekly in my inbox. Um, so I'm always looking for anything that is relevant. So, this is now on my, my radar for that. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if something comes up soon. Um, you know, these grant cycles tend to be cyclical. Uh, a, and I noticed in last week's that, you know, there were five pages of open grants, whereas before there were two, you know, near the end of December. So, you know, it's a season where stuff might start to be opening up. Um, and I know, Karen, you had mentioned possibly doing a crowdfund, uh, that is an option. Um, either through this Sustainable CT Match Fund, which is actually no longer on IOB, they're, they're using a different partner platform, I can't remember which one, though. Uh, or just independently through IOB or some other. Um, in general, it's my goal to try to use that platform once a year, so we don't tire people out with the crowdfunding. Um, a, and also try to target projects that don't have a good mechanism for raising funds in other ways that are kind of charismatic. Um, that crowdfunding stuff is best suited for things that are easy to understand and, you know, very tangible for somebody to see the result. This, this would, in fact, possibly be a good one. Um, uh, so it's certainly something I can, I, I can send you guys information on how that works through Sustainable Connecticut. Um, I hadn't narrowed down, um, I mean, I've got a couple of possibilities swirling in my, you know, in the background as to what to possibly use that for this year. Maybe this is the project. Um, so, but, you know, this is a long, long answer.
If we went ahead and voted and committed the money to it, then we could not then raise money to reimburse ourselves. Like, can we do this a little bit backwards? Like, like, you know, we say in February, let's go ahead and order this, and then do a crowdfunding, because I'm, I'm thinking, we have all these Facebook followers, and we should try to get them to contribute to something that supports the Trails, possibly. But...
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem, I, I don't think there's any problem with, you know, and, and it's what logic you think obtains, really, but with deciding that you are going to purchase the trailer, right? And you know you have the funds. And then opening the crowdfund, uh, you know, to see what you can supplement. In other words, committing up to the full amount, like you want to be sure you have the full amount, and then opening that up. And we've, we've taken plenty of votes where it's, you know, committing up to the amount of funds, too, and then sometimes it, it ends up being less than that. Um, they're not hard to set up, those, uh, those crowdfunds. You do need, um, you do need a, a tax ID number of some kind. So, if you're not a 501(c)(3) on your own, which I believe Trails is not, you'd be using the town's EIN number, which is fine. Uh, and the town acts as the fiscal in that case. But that's how we've done the other two that we've done. The, the suffrage one, which sort of, because of COVID, didn't really go very far, although we got a little, um, we did get a little, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, that one actually went through Thompson Historical Society. But the, uh, the one to do the, the wayfinding, uh, you know, that was on the town's EIN number. So, you know, it's, it's easy enough to do.
What are the rest, do you think about that?
Just my initial thought on that, Karen, and again, I, I, I've heard part of the conversation, I'm just going to say my, my initial thoughts is I don't want to keep waiting either. If we're going to do this, we do this, and I get waiting till February. I'm not saying on that, I'm just saying on if we have to get this funded in a different way, and we have to wait till funding comes. Um, my thoughts on that were, um, maybe for the mower, or do we do something like that for the mower? If you look at some of the costs for the mowers, um, they were like four, $5,000. That's a lot of money, once we've already spent money on a trailer. So, that was just my kind of initial thoughts, if we could find some other funding for, for that type of a piece of equipment. But...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, John, John does bring up a good point there. If I'm looking for specifically grant funding, those are always a hurry-up-and-wait thing, right? You hurry up and apply, and then you find out whether you get the money, and, and they're very rarely short turnarounds. Some of them are shorter than others, obviously. Um, the IOB you can set up to do in a relatively quick turnaround. You know, if you were to decide to do that, you set whatever period you're doing your fundraising, and then at the close, whatever you've raised gets dispersed to you. So, that is a quicker turn, uh, as an alternate method, uh, if you choose to pursue that. But, but yes, John does bring up a good point. I, i, if you're, if you're deciding that you want to look for grant funding for it, what you're really committing to is waiting to find out if you get the money.
No, that's not, all right, I was saying, let's vote in February and do it. But can we, can we raise money for it after the fact with that as what we're saying we're raising the money for?
I, I think you can, I think that you can commit to ra, to, uh, up to X dollars, assume the, the full cost of whatever you're looking for,
Yeah.
out of the Trails budget, but then you can set up your crowdfund, uh, to solicit donations, and then you would just subtract that from the amount that you take out of the Trails budget.
Okay, sounds good.
So, here's a thought. Um, I'm looking at this image that John put up on here, and it looks like, you know, it's a black and white photo of a trailer. Could it be run through Photoshop, either by the people that build the trailer or somebody else to show it in orange and to show it with logos? And we could put it up on a Facebook page and say, this is something that we need, uh, we would like to give you an opportunity to, uh, chip in, watch in February, we're going to launch, uh, uh, crowdfunding. And, uh, you know, we can begin now. As soon as we got the image, we could put that up on Facebook and say, we're, we want it, we want help doing this. And, oh, by the way, there's a ATV, and there's a, there's a mower coming along behind it, and we got hand tools, and we got projects, and, you know. You know, something at the branding committee talked about the other day is the need to get more news on the Town's Trails Committee webpage. And this is a kind of thing that, uh, Tara, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, but this seems like it's tailor-made for that. And then, uh, putting it up on our social media platforms as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you're making a decision tonight, and I'm not clear that you will or will not be, uh, let, let us assume for a second that you are making a decision tonight to proceed with some action on this. Then, as I started to raise in, in branding, I, you know, I, I'm going to be turning around after all these meetings that, that I am an advisory staff member on, and, and seeing if there is something that I can post either on the dedicated web pa, you know, webpage on the town's website, as a press release, on social media, you know, as they seem appropriate. But, but making those updates come faster. Um, so, yes, I would generally suggest that Trails do the same thing after each meeting. Um, you know, everybody posts the minutes, and, and now there, there are recordings of the meetings, and that's to satisfy the, the FOIA requirements. But the enthusiasm comes from the, um, sort of the narratives that you tell. So, that's, that's where your social media pages and your webpage, that's, that's where you, you get to really get people excited. So, a, as a general point, yes, I would, I would be turning around and doing that as often as you feel you can.
We want to wait until after we vote on it in February, but yeah, we certainly will make an announcement. I don't know if folks saw, also, there was an article in The Villager. They shared it with their social media, um, they were quoting us. Yeah, you saw that, John, yeah, they were quoting us, and they...
I shared it on Trails.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, yeah, they, they basically took the minutes from our last meeting. So, um, that's pretty awesome. I mean, they went in and, and listened to the minutes and took what's going on in Trails right out, right out of the minutes, and, um, and, uh, you know, posted an article, so.
Well, it's, it sounds to me like everybody wants to do this, but we need a final figure to vote on.
Yeah, a few more questions that John's got to go research, and it sounds like we're almost there.
Yeah, the final figure and the information about the insurance that, uh,
Right.
wasn't able to be provided. But I think if those are all in place by the first of February, then we should be able to take the vote and get this ordered.
Now, John, did they say how long it would take to do this special door?
Um, just for the trailer, the special door didn't really matter, I got to, um...
I mean, we would have it for the, for this spring, right? If we vote in February.
Late spring, because if we vote in February, it's showing me five to eight weeks. But I'm just going to say, if you've tried to purchase anything lately, um, supplies and raw material are nuts. And I, I'm just saying, I'd look for a stove, a dishwasher, like, to get particulars and have something built is... They, they don't know dates, but they said five to eight weeks is what they told me. So, if we did it in February, I mean, eight weeks is February, March into April, we should have it hopefully by, you know, for spring.
Sounds good, I mean, hopefully, yeah.
So, um, I'm just going to check real quick, just so we know, right? I'm going to find out about a price on the color. Aluminum frame. Um...
Spare tire?
The weight capacity, if the frame is aluminum, how much is it going to be different? Uh, restrict...
Spare tire and mount, on the outside.
Spare tire, mount, and stabilizers.
Right.
So, one, two, three, four, I have four questions to ask them.
And then I think Charlie said the weight change, if it's changed to aluminum, if that changes anything.
Yeah, the gross vehicle weight, right, I, I'll ask that kind of as an whole thing.
The ca, what?
Another question for me.
The carrying weight, David's saying, not the gross weight, but the carrying weight?
Yeah, it's right on here, it is payload.
No, if it's an aluminum frame, does that, is that what changes, the carrying weight?
Right, I'll ask them. I know it's going to change the curb weight, but I don't know about the payload weight. I should, I don't know, am I frozen? I should have, no, I see people moving, I should, I, they should be able to give me that answer. I'd definitely by next meeting easily, so I have some free time this week, I'll stop in and talk to them.
Okay, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up under this basic topic? So, I put, I put down other anticipated 2021 expenses. So, that was just so that we would look at what we have and what we weren't going to spend for the trailer. So, I don't see any, you know, we may need brochures again soon. Right? And the T-shirts, maybe, but we're not doing many much with that. Is there anything else that I didn't think of that we're, we anticipate we're going to need a cash for?
Brochures, something, definitely, for this...
John, on the mower?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have the specs on the various types of mowers?
Um, so, I just went to their website, and I wrote down a bunch of notes, uh, uh, on all of them. I, I mean, they're on, I have them on as a bunch of different notes on here, but I, I don't know them off the top of my head, but if you go to DR brush mowers, you'll definitely get, I mean, you can look through, there's plenty of reviews, there's plenty of, um, specs. Like I said, they have from, I think it's like eight to 10 horsepower, up to like 25 horsepower, uh, in different models. And like I said, some of the prices are crazy.
Yeah, John, this is Paul, when I looked at it, uh, I come to the conclusion that the, the largest 48-inch width mower is probably the one we want. I think they have three 48-inch ones, one's really wimpy. Uh, and...
Yep.
The larger one had the biggest motor on it, and it, it, it looked the best. That might just say.
And I, I'm just going to say, from mowing with somebody, um, down that, like, horsepower matters as far as my reviews that I read. So, to get the wimpy one and save money is, we're just going to break it, not going to lie.
Karen, did you have on your expense list the porta potties for the Airlines Trail?
Yeah, good, good one.
Uh, nice, Brian.
High five, Brian.
If we're going to order more of those maps, we need to do a little bit of editing on the, on the files. I found the original that David did for us, David Barber. And I tried to put the QR codes in it, but I really didn't have a real clean file to, to insert.
Charlie, I'll give you a call, but, but I know that, I think you're working off of some old ones, so let me work with Karen on that, um, and, and we'll try to edit it. I know we're trying to make it smaller to save some costs.
Yeah, the eight and a half by 11 will save us a significant amount on the printing costs, and they go fast.
Yeah, I'm working on that with Karen and, um, and Renee.
And Renee, late, Renee should have the latest...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we definitely, I mean, they definitely do go fast, but that's a good thing, you know? I mean, like, and we know, as you saw from the numbers in the last spring, and I don't think that it's going to cha, you know, and the fall, I think it's going to be the same. I think that people have caught the bug, and I'm sure Lian would say the same thing, and, um, that you're, there's as much activity this spring as we did last spring.
I, I put brochures out there, my, my old copy about a month ago at Lowell Davis, and they're gone.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and aside for the Trails, uh, whoever has contact with the state, I did walk Lowell to Sunset. And by the way, Rich did a great job on Sunset Hill Road, that, that road looks great. Uh, a couple was walking from that direction, from the Mechanicsville direction, from Charlton. They love our trail, they walk it all the time. I did ask them how the trail was up in that direction, since I wasn't walking that far. They did say there was a tree down about a 10-inch diameter that was completely across the trail. You can step over it, but you wouldn't be able to ride a bike or anything through that unless it was, uh, cut or cut and removed. They said it was up near the, uh, the railroad overpass area of the trail.
Nice, so I, I'm going to tell you guys a quick story, just, just, and it's funny. Um, I posted on the Trails Committee about the tree that was down last time, that somebody let me know about it. And actually, a guy that's on the fire department, his wife rides horses, and she told him, literally, I put it up on, say, Thursday, she told him, she said, "You have enough time before work tomorrow morning, why don't you go cut that tree for them?" So, he went and cut the tree for us, because he didn't start work until 11 o'clock, so... Um, and actually, two other people said that they would cut the tree for me, um, that they've cut them in the past. Um, I'm not even asking for them, I'm just saying, hey, for your information, there's a tree down, be aware. And people are like, "I'll go cut it tomorrow." So, um, I'll put it out there, and we'll see what we get.
Hey, hey, guys, um, if, if there is no other, um, actual business, I just lost my web connection on my desktop, which is where I've been hosting it, so I don't know what that's going to do to this recording. I'm also on my phone, which is why I can communicate, but, um, just be advised, you might not want to do anything else official here until I can figure out what just happened to my connection.
It says it's still recording on my phone.
Okay, well, that's good.
I mean, we've covered the business we're allowed to cover, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and then if you still want to chat for a minute, you can.
I'll second that motion. Lucille.
Awesome.
What time is it?
Eight eleven.
Late eleven, okay.
Thanks for your work, everyone. Moving forward.
I got an update on, uh, trail work in Pomford, if anybody does not know and is interested. On Facebook, on Facebook tonight, uh, Maureen Nicholson said that they expect their final bridge, which will be about the size of the one that crosses the stream behind the condos, to be delivered on Thursday of this week. Uh, they're also just about finished with the, uh, culvert or underpass at, uh, River Road at the Putnam side of their town. And then they've got, uh, they expected it's going to be about a year before they get it all smoothed out and stone dust and whatnot. But, um, she thought, somebody thought that they would be putting the decking down on the one that crosses over 44 and 169 at the same time as they finish off the bridge at, uh, Needles Eye Road, and that, uh, they did not know whether or not that would be officially opened for use until they got everything else done. But any of us who have been out on those trails know that there's a lot of bike riders that see the deck in place and they're going to go across it. So I don't know. Looks like they're coming along pretty good. And we're the next one, so we've got to start gearing up for the, uh, TAP, uh, grant, the Transportation Alternative Plan or Pro- Program Grant. But, um, but since they're showing, uh, a very serious commitment, and since we are now officially being connected with the East Coast Greenway, we fall into that commitment that the state has, uh, we should not back off from it. We should, uh, move ahead as if we're part of that program, too. Stay safe, everybody. It's a crazy world out there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Hi.
Thank you.
Come in, everyone.
Hi, thank you.